Father, we thank you for the time that you give us to meet together to discuss matters that remain in this community. We also thank you for the time of year that you get to celebrate. Thank you for sending your son, Jesus, and thank you for allowing us to celebrate his birth and the joy that he gives us. But now we ask that tonight you give us your wisdom, that your spirit would garner every heart that's here, so that as we discuss matters that remain in this community, that it will be done in a sincere manner and under your love and your guidance. Now, help us to do what pleases you. Please forgive us if we send things to you and fail. And we ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you'll call me at order at 6:02. We'll call, please. Here.
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 Okay. Number one, approval of the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, Gabe has made the motion to approve the agenda. Bill has seconded that. All those in favor? Four zero. Okay. Do you want us to approve these in separate sections or all at once?
If you have reviews in, all at once would be awesome.
Okay. Okay.
twentieth, thirtieth, and December the fourth and the eighth.
Okay, Bobby's made the motion to approve the fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth, twentieth, thirtieth, December fourth, and December eighth. Doreen has seconded that. All those in favor? Four zero. Okay, so that's taken care of. Now we're at guests. Hi, Tala Nmar. This is the company from Texas that installs the solar panel. Okay. I believe they were on our agenda once before. We didn't have enough.
They didn't have a business.
There's...
No one was here.
Yeah, I think.
There's still not a business. Like, there's...
Yeah.
Do we have a business name on this?
It was. I think Doreen made the motion.
Yeah, the company is Edison Solar.
No, we didn't. I wish we could ask questions. My question would be, like, do we know if they have insurance? I know that in the past we've had issues with companies digging up our GTC lines and there was a problem there with... And I don't know if it was... It wasn't just companies that were doing that. Okay. I would entertain a motion on that one. Okay, Gabe has made the motion to postpone this business license for Edison Solar for more information until the twenty eighth.
Sure.
Bill has seconded that. All those in favor? Four zero. All right, Denise. Denise is our next guest. Do you have her information in front of you? You doing okay tonight? Any questions for Denise?
No, I move that we approve the business license for April Homes Forever.
Okay. Bobby has made the motion to approve the business license for April Homes Forever. Gabe has seconded that. All those in favor? Four zero.
Could I just ask a favor on your business license? Would you mind signing it? Thank you.
They'll have it ready for you next week. David Florrie. He's our next guy. David is here. He'd like to do shine on detailing, auto detailing, part again.
Where is this? Are you doing this local or are you...
Six twelve Sinner Street.
Okay.
Okay, Gabe, side.
Make a motion. We would shine on detailing or approve the business license.
Okay. Gabe has made the motion to provide a business license to shine on detailing. Bill has seconded that. All those in favor? Four zero. They'll have your business license ready for you next week. And I believe, is it twenty five or is it... Twenty. Okay. It'll be twenty dollars. Okay? You just pay when you come and check it out. Thank you. You're welcome to stay the whole time or you're welcome to leave. It's entirely up to you.
You guys.
Danny. Danny Bush, we have you down. It says new. What are we...
Yeah, I'd like to have a two-inch water line run from the street to the front where I'm building those duplexes because we have some bad water pressure up there. I'd like to get a two-inch up there because I'm going to have four different lines, different apartments for the work off of it.
So you...
I'll have four water meters when it's all done.
Okay, so you're requesting that the city put the line in from the road to...
Where the meters are.
Where the meters are. Okay.
I'd like to have a two-inch line. That way we'll have better pressure.
Okay. Okay. Questions, council?
Do you have a completion date?
No, whenever I get it done.
Well, I'm just wondering when we make sure that we have our water in that area.
Well, yeah, I'll let you know. It'll take a while because...
Probably need to talk to him about it.
Okay. A little bombarding when it comes to the door.
Okay.
But I know we usually do supply them from the road to the meters and then the houses supply them from the meters to the house.
Yeah. Yeah, there's much stuff all out there because of all the telephone lines and stuff like that.
We need to talk to you. Welcome back in, Jim. You can stop right there. No, right behind the...
Make up my mind.
Stay behind the podium.
Can you stay behind the microphone?
I can reach him from here.
Danny is wanting to put in a new two-inch water line from the street to where he's putting in some duplexes.
To the meter.
To the meter. To the meter. From the main to the meter.
From the two inches already there.
From the two inches already there?
Well, it's out the street. I'd like to have it closer to the duplexes because the water pressure is bad out there.
I mean, that's doable, yeah. Because we've got a valve on it there.
Okay.
So again, where we had it, yeah, we've got a valve right there, so we just have to uncover it and...
Run it to it?
Yeah.
Okay. When is the estimated completion date?
Well, actually, whenever they get to see me at work, I'm waiting on, you know, last year to do the footings and stuff like that. Then I'll do the plumbing and...
Do you have a schedule for your guys?
It won't take long to do it. I'm waiting on some pipe to come in for the Casey's to get. You know, it'd be in the sprays where I really need the water because I got water at both sides of it I can use for what we need to use it for.
Well, that's for...
So whenever you get it in there.
Yeah.
And I'll show you where, you know, it has the meters and stuff set out in front of it.
Can we estimate it, like, by March? Can we say by March?
Yeah, something like that.
That sound... Sound doable?
Yeah.
Okay.
What is the, maybe a hundred foot height?
Yeah, about a hundred foot.
And then what's that two... Was it going to be two meters?
Yeah, it'd be two meters start with, then there'll be two more later. Yeah. It'd be four meters in total.
Yeah. Yeah, it should be the invoice for the materials.
Invoice for the materials? That's what you're normally...
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. I don't know that we necessarily need to vote on that. I don't feel that...
Informational.
Informational, yeah. Might fill out just a, like, a work order to remind you maybe when you get back.
Yeah, or Danny can haul wrap me up in there closer or...
Yeah, either way.
And I'll heap him up here pretty soon, maybe next week or something. See, and when I get, if we get a free day, we'll go get it in.
Do you have addresses for that yet?
Do what?
Do you have addresses for that?
Ten thirty-five.
Okay. I can make sure that we have your...
Yeah, there'll be a, you know, A and B of markets on this one. There'll be...
There you go.
Let's see, it's on this, ten thirty-five West Valley.
Yeah, we had the... You told me that it... Yeah, we had the, yeah, we had the established on after us.
Okay. We'll move on to guest number five, Gladwell Roof. Is there anybody here with Gladwell? Why is there two different addresses? Oh, that may be the owner's address. Yeah. The address of the business is actually in Jofflin address.
They actually are already doing business in town. I just put a roof on my neighbor's house.
Oh, okay. I think that that's the company doing the work and doing the... Has a requirement or do you think so?
So they were asking to tell them to walk through, apply for this?
Okay. They also have an insurance liability attached on there too, so they're showing that they are insured. There says Roof and Solar on theirs too. Interesting.
I'm not seeing that either.
Yeah, you see that?
No, you didn't do that.
Maybe I ended up with the names up here. Well, what I have in front of me is I have these and then I have their certificate of liability insurance that shows coverage in case something happens. Any questions on that? Do you entertain a motion or...
Should we give Gladwell Roofing a second?
Second. Okay, Gabe has made the motion to go ahead and grant Gladwell Roofing a business license with the city of Granby. Bobby has seconded that. All those in favor? Four zero. Okay, now we are at the old business, ARCA funds. You have a list here of the balance left over from the ARCA funds at the moment. We're sitting at two hundred seventy-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-three ninety-nine. We've kicked this around, lots of different ideas. I did go to the economic development committee's meeting the other day. Did you guys ever get any chance to talk about ideas or anything like that?
Yeah, just a little bit. I did measure the Thunder Building. We're about out of room already and I'm afraid that we may have hit a plateau as far as being able to make more sales because we're limited on space. And so Damien reminds me that Ira has his building and I talked to him yesterday. And he is, he's got two separate buildings there. The lower price was sixty-nine. It's seventeen hundred square foot. And he said that's negotiable. The other one is for sale next door too, which is about two thousand square foot. So I don't see any way we could afford it, but he's asked me for that. But we've got about eight hundred square foot down there and he said this one is about seventeen hundred square foot. So that would just about double the size that we needed. But we don't have the funds to be able to do that. I don't want to encumber the committee with the loan. It doesn't work as well. However, we would also with the council's blessing, if we were able to do something like that, we would want to be able to sublet that building after the business. And so hopefully we'll be able to get a little return on that as well.
So basically, what we were talking about was this money, one of the reasons that they put ARCA funds out was for economic growth. The economic development committee created that store two years ago in January, and they've gotten to where it's pretty well established at this point. They pay two full-time employees, which are, or three, I'm sorry, three full-time employees, and they are utilizing one of our buildings with a dollar a year lease, I think is what we have on there. So the idea was, right now, interest rates are really high on loans. If we were to utilize any of these ARCA funds to loan money out, we would get an interest rate, we would get our percentage back, a small percentage back on the loan, they would be able to move to a larger building, sublease what they fix. Because, well, so you guys fixed it, you've put about eleven thousand into it?
Thirteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand into the building for the city in the first place. So their idea was maybe they could sublease out that one, move their store down to fill up another vacant building, and then, you know, just like do a loan on it from us while they pay off the building. It's just an idea that we talked a little bit about throughout there. Yes, sir.
Are you moving down here pretty soon? Down here where the police department is?
Yes.
Well, if you could hold off, you could rent on this one. You can add block over.
We could. The value of this one is a lot higher than what he's talking about too. It is a possibility though. I mean, these guys, whatever they're thinking on it, I mean...
And did they sell it or rent it?
Yeah. I do know that, I mean, this is a pretty prime location, very large space. If you were to do that, I don't know, I don't feel like you'll get your return back on this size of a building, but I don't know, business-wise. It would, that, if you were to do a low-interest loan, you'll get your money back, basically, for the city. And I get that what you're doing brings us revenue and I'm not, and it brings, it gives people things to do. You're putting the money back into the community, so I hate to say it in that way, so please don't take it wrong when I say not getting our money back. But if we were doing a low-interest loan, we would get the money back plus interest on it. And you'd fill up another empty building, basically.
You didn't use ARCA funds to do that?
You could, yes, because the ARCA funds are available for economic growth. And that's one of the main reasons it was put out there, is because when COVID came, we took a pretty big economic hit.
Are you going to offer funds, so that you can claw back that's why you're being too fast that there is a wide range of problems that you're facing. What would you do? But if you're talking about more, are you offering them back?
No, if you don't use them, you lose them. You have to, you have to obligate, these ARCA funds have to be obligated by the end of this year, by the end of December. So if we've obligated them, they need to be utilized by the end of next year, which is 2025. So if you don't use it, you do lose it. They will take it back, yes.
So we need to obligate it?
It'll need to be obligated. And we have purchased a back truck for the utilities, which is, they've already started utilizing that. That's going to save us a lot of time and money. It'll help our guys work a little quicker and a little safer. I know that GTC was very excited about that because we won't be here in there long.
So if we lent money for this building down here, that's still going to leave us two hundred thousand to obligate?
Still quite a bit left, yes.
What other kind of equipment do we need for city...
Other things we kind of, I mean, you can do a lot of different things. Some of the ideas, I know we talked about the dugouts at the ballpark. Those should have been built like probably three years ago. That's something you can do because ARCA and the COVID was to get people out and about. So parks, it can be used in parks.
So just a thought, down at the ballpark, I think it would be great to have some playground equipment for children to play on while their older siblings are playing ball. I know I've been to a lot of the different city parks where they've had the ball fields, but they also have a playground area for kids. Just an idea.
And our other parks need to be upgraded as well, plus where the pond is supposed to leave. Don't we put it for that?
And there's nothing stopping us from saying we can obligate this amount and then try to shoot for a grant that'll match us too. We could try to, over the 2024 year, try to get some of that matching. Now, Lana, you were throwing out other ideas. Was there something else that I'm missing?
Healthcare, we find there are things that we have to, we talked about, I mean, just briefly about public domain and come through healthcare and, and we need building, but something else, and you think of the fund to help out with.
And the founders moving could be that's just the healthcare, as long as it's in the homeless area. How long do they sublet that? I mean, how long is that?
Ten years.
Yeah, it was a long one.
You know, we talked about public domain, but kind of there's something you might talk about.
Yes. When we talk about the comprehensive plan, Harry S. Truman does, you can go and sit down with them and you can say, okay, what do you want your community to look like in five years, ten years, fifteen years? And they will help you write out a plan that will cover your parks, your water systems, your everything, and then you could pass it on to your people yearly so that you guys are like focused and going in the right direction at all times. You can add stuff to it and take things away over, you know, voting-wise, but it'll keep, it'll keep your councils moving in a direction of growth versus we come in and then we just decide what we're going to do the next day type thing. So those, that was, I want to say it was a thousand to do something like that for Harry S. Truman. I have to talk to Kerry just to make sure that that's what it was, but I watched them work on Carl Junctions and I thought it was kind of interesting.
And they talked about the big people.
Those people, yes. And I don't think that was a big expense, was it, Jim? I think you and I looked up some of that.
Yeah, that was, what we moved the basket through. We was looking at...
And it was two hundred a piece, right?
Yeah, I think it was like a hundred fifty dollars basket or something.
I would say, I want to say it was like five thousand or less to make, to actually create a course.
I was just going to keep a question for that one.
Where at?
I thought down like the, it's not hard. Initially, I thought out of the ballpark because actually it's out there on the ground on the small concrete spot out there. When it's still hot, it might be a good idea, but getting the water in out there would actually be...
What about near the pond? Instead of the pond, yeah. The extent part, I stopped and Gabe, you're exaggerating the problem. So can we come back with the plan up by the last meeting of the year?
We could. Mm-hmm. We could. I do, that is very interesting too, I didn't think about the fact that that is...
Well, that's why I'd like to say, if we offer up the ARCA funds, would they release their lease so the city would be...
That's definitely something you'd find your people about.
Does it cover infrastructure too?
Yes, yes, it does. And it can be used on infrastructure. The only thing, the only thing bad about it is it's not a drop in the bucket to what we're doing, so it's not going to take the edge off of anything. It's not a change.
No, the one thing I was thinking was up there, what we were talking about, and getting a road board under the highway from the south side and put a six-inch line over it because Matt Rance got five acres out there too that he wanted to do something with.
What would it cost on something like that?
I don't know. I mean...
Come back with the prices for...
I'll get five for the board and stuff.
Can you, can you get that by next, like the twenty eighth?
Yeah.
Okay.
But that would just, you know, it would be a head start to the new water upgrade because they're going to bring in new line, big line all the way down that side anyhow. But that would just be your start.
Yeah, especially if you're bringing in houses and you've got businesses going in from there.
That's kind of what Matt talked about too.
Yeah, that, and that's economics right there.
And we put, have a heightened requirement too.
Unfortunately, I was able to stay at the time and some of the stuff that everybody had closed back, so never thought people would do.
Okay, I would entertain a motion on that. To postpone.
Make a motion that we postpone the discussion on the ARCA funds to December twenty eighth?
Okay, Doreen has made the motion to go ahead and postpone the discussion on the ARCA funds to December twenty eighth, and Bill has seconded that. All those in favor? Four zero.
So that may we have to do it or...
Yep, yep.
I'd like to interject too, we still need more money over here on this class loss. There has been, if you've noticed, there has been some work being done over there. We have around thirty-five thousand dollars in bank right now for, for the concrete and there is another twelve thousand that has been planned that will be after the first year. So you are getting some money in on that there.
Thank you for the update on that. All right, number two, discussion of lead line inventory bids that were received. Okay, we got two bids in on the lead line inventory. We do have a representative here from Total H2O Solutions, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so the bid you guys put forth, we have, their bid was a hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred. The bid from the, is it Byron, Di Granza and Jones Construction? Their bid was one twenty-nine, one hundred twenty-nine thousand four hundred. Council needs to know that there is, is it considered grant money? We will pay up to twenty thousand no matter which bids we choose, and then the grant money will pay for the rest. We are required to do this. So please remind me of your name, dear.
You may stand up.
Yeah, come on.
So my name is Brad Raiburn. I started Total H2O Solutions to, to lead service line inventory. This is the business, this is what, what our company does. So I come tonight to address any questions you may have because there's a lot of questions about it and a lot of unknowns and a lot of things that I address at meetings. And I try to come to those as many as I can, you know, so. But, you know, it's, like you said, it is required to be done, and you did get a grant to do the work.
Right, right. I think, I think if the grant passes, like after twenty thousand, then it's covered. And this is part of our water system. Now, our guys will still be required to take the pictures at the places and all that, correct? Or are you guys... Now, our guys will still be required to take the pictures at the places and all that crap, or are you guys, you all?
No, so I, and I'd have to speak with Jim. So how, how we do it is, um, we map all the water meters, do you, G I S map them? I don't know if that's already been done. If not, then, uh, your guys, somebody would have to show me where the meters are. I'd have to get an account number and service address for each meter.
Okay.
And then from there, we identify what homes were built before 1989, what homes were built after 1989. We review the records of any of the water system upgrades that have been done, that you have records for. I sit down with Jim, whoever, anyone that knows anything about the water system, and I talk to them and, and put the information into Diamond Maps. And then from there, we determine how many have to be potholed, and we don't know yet, but we will know. And we either, you know, there's, uh, opportunity there that we either out pothole those, those, uh, places, or we may back out the meter pits, depending on how that goes. So, but it's a, you know, as far as your part, yes, there, there's gonna be work that has, that I, you know, I'm gonna have questions, I'm gonna have all this stuff. But as far as you all having to do any of the picture taking, that, the, the field work part, I would say, the biggest thing would be, I don't, how many meters you all have, Jim? I, I don't remember.
Mine always just say 900.
Okay, um, little, on your R I P, it said 400. 450 on your request for proposal. 448 lines.
Yeah, it says it on both of those. Could you tell us how much would it cost to double that? Is it gonna double it?
It will not double the, it will not double the bid, it's not gonna double it. So what it would, what, what, at the end of the day, here's where, here's how that would work. I would still map all the meters. I'd still do the whole entire inventory. Uh, the, the money, the real, the, what costs the most is the potholing, okay? That, it just does. So, um, you know, and you wouldn't be charged a dime more than what the bid is for. But to say, this is for me to sit here and say it's gonna cost that amount to do 900 service lines, I'd be lying.
So we need to, we need to, uh, send that back out to both of these companies and have them rebid?
I don't know that we have time to go draft, uh, we don't have to ask those companies to do that. We wouldn't be able to go through the process.
No. No.
So, and, and this is, this is just what, here's, here's what I'm gonna say. Right now, whoever you choose, you know, right now, this is a four month process for us to get on, in the field work. By the time the contract's approved, all this, all the paperwork's done, all that stuff's done, it's four months. Um, and I know that you all only got so much grant money to do this work. You know, you've only got what it is, and so there is, so when I'm done, S R F, you got ARPA, it's a totally different grant. S R F's a totally different grant. S R F has funding available, okay? So if I come in here and do the inventory, say it's, I can start in three or four months, whatever that timeline is. I can get you a, a pretty good estimate of how many actually have to be potholed. And then at that point, I can say, here, here's, here's how many has to be potholed, and then you guys can go and do the application for the S R F grant. Or, go ahead.
Are we talking like that 450 number? Cause I don't think you'll have, there'll, there'll be that many pockets.
What is, what is potholed?
Okay, so, so what we're talking about doing, so let's go, let's say the meter at the city hall. So we, we check it, Jim doesn't know if the service line material from the main, the meter, he don't know what it is. And we have to verify what that material is from the main into the building. So how we go about doing that is we use assessor records to find out when these homes were built, businesses, so forth and so on. So anything before 1989, yeah, we're gonna verify, we're sending letters to all your customers. Your customers send, send those letters back, some of them do, some of them don't. For those that don't, we do, we, uh, we have somebody come in and go and try to get that information from the house. Um, with the, and then we got, you know, once we get that information, we still have to verify it out by the meter. You know, whether it's in the meter or outside the meter. Big cost variance when it's inside the meter. We can back out the meter pit and find out what it is there, it's a hundred and fifty dollars compared to whenever they do the holes, it's 300 to 350. Because when they do the holes, the vac machine, which you guys have one, so I mean, I'm boring you right now. Yeah, 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 so I'm boring you. So the hole's about this big, they put sand, dirt, gravel, whatever back in it. And the plug that they take out, they take a shovel, we dig the plug out, put it to the side, and then they put the plug back in. Homeowners don't even know we're there. With that said though, we can't just score on people's property. You have to have access agreements, things like that. Now, we can do the city side. So like Jim said, you know, we, we may not need any extra money. I don't know. You know, I just, I don't know. Uh, there, there, it's, it's hard to say, but we can take the money as far as we can, you know, we'll have a pretty good idea within the first 45 days. Because, uh, after I get to start. So the S R F money will be there, um, I just.
If I remember right, the grant was a max of three, 130, was it?
I don't remember.
Do you remember Lana?
Uh, I, it's, it's around 130,000 is what you all got. So, I mean, it, it, it's just. These grant, this lead service line inventory is so new for everyone.
Yes.
It's, and so I'm bidding on projects all over Missouri. I'm, I'm completing, I'm getting, I'm getting them complete as I go. I'm learning a whole bunch as I go. I knew how to G I S map when I started this, and I knew the basic concept of what had to, what it took to get this done, okay? So that's how.
I do have a question. When, when you're talking about the G S, G S I map, Lance, that's the same as what we use for our sewer, right? Is there, is there a way we can like connect those together so that once it's mapped, it goes into our system?
Yeah, we do the same, it's the same system. We're gonna log into ours and just put it in.
Yes, yes.
That how you'll do it?
Yep, but, a- absolutely, now, well, well, let me, are you using Diamond Maps? Okay, so that's even better for, because that was the part I left out. You, you all own the map, okay? So the, the, the part of the 450 to 900, yeah, obviously it's gonna, I mean, I don't know about what this other company's doing, I don't know how they're mapping the meters. So the good part about the Diamond Maps is I do the inventory from the map, okay? So when, whenever it's all done, the inventory that you all have will be on the map. So in 20 years, because this is a, this is a living document, it don't end today, it don't end tomorrow. But in 20 years, if somebody comes in, well, where's your lead inventory? I export that lead inventory to D N R spreadsheet. The spreadsheet's on the map already, and all that has to be done is just the map pulled up. So when I'm done, you have the customer letters that we get back is in the map, because we take pictures of them, put them in the map. Any information that we find out in the field while we're working's in the map. So I understand what you're saying. I can tell you this, if you rebid for the 900, all those bids are gonna come way over what your grant dollars are right now, and then what are you gonna do? You don't have, you, we, you know, because you can't, the S R F grant, you can't, you know, yeah, you can go apply for it, but then you gotta wait for that time period to, to end.
And we don't have time to do that, because this is required.
This is required, and it will be turned in by the deadline, whether it's, and that's the other thing about it, the L S L I inventory, it's gotta be done by October 16th, 2024.
Right.
It'll be turned in by then. But if we find out that we gotta do more potholing, you got that timeframe there. But you, guess what? Since it got turned in, you, it, you, you still have, you have time at that point. It's the people that don't turn it in, you know, that it doesn't get turned in, so.
So potholing is actually maybe you need to hold it to the ground to act in a condition of line for the house, as opposed to simply going into the basement or whatever and looking at it?
To identi- to identify the material. D N R does not, is, I mean, they don't, they, they lot, they want the information of where it comes in the house, but they're not relying solely on that information. They also want it, they want another spot from the house to the meter. And, I mean, if I start getting up by houses, digging holes, potholing or whatever, you all know, I mean, it, it's gonna be bad. I mean, you know.
Actually, in 30 years, I've never found any lead yard on it.
Uh, and, yeah, I agree, Jim, you haven't found, and, and you, and I don't think we're gonna find it to, I'm, I'm sitting here hoping that we find lead. But if we do find the lead, and this is another thing I see happening, and it just, it's gonna happen. But homeowners are finding out about this and they're, they're seeing the dollar signs. The government's making a big deal of this and, and then, because they're saying, we'll pay for all of it. What they're not saying is that, is that there is money available right now to replace lead lines from the main to the meter. They haven't figured out how to replace the water line from the home to the meter, because that's on someone else's property.
Right, right.
You know, so there's, you know, so just because somebody says, oh, well, we got lead, doesn't mean you're gonna give them a fat check. So.
Right.
Anyway, um, that's what I know, and I'd be glad to, to work with you all and, and get done what we can get done. And to si- to sit here and say, yeah, this is gonna be, we're gonna be able to pothole 900 service lines, and like Jim said, they're, we're not gonna have to. And with, in all honesty, we're not gonna get 900 access agreements. There's not nine, you know, or 300 access agreements. It just depends on, you know, I mean, how many, until the inventory process is done, we, we're not gonna know. So.
I do know that the, the lady told us that if, that there is no I don't knows on there, it has to be, we have to state whether it is or isn't. Otherwise, red flags will become law problems.
Absolutely, you have to state because you have options. Like, there, there's 14 questions for each meter. Okay, so I, I sit there and say, one of the questions that I've struggled with is there's connector at the main, okay? There's a, you know, I struggle with that question because there's no clear cut answer on what the connector is. It says polyethylene or gooseneck or what, but it gives you that option of unknown, okay? So on those questions, if I sit there and put nothing down, but I'm not lying on my spreadsheets, you know, I'm putting unknown. Another question, was there ever lead at, at the service? It could've been. I, I mean, you know, without, and that's the, after the 1989. You know, after 1989, there shouldn't have been, so I could answer no. But your other answer is unknown. But you don't get deemed on that. What you get deemed on is the material, okay? So if I go through and I put unknown on all the materials of the service line material, that's where you get deemed at. It's not so much these, uh, some of these questions, because we can't answer them all. I mean, that, like, um, one of them is, does the customer have, um, treatment in his house, in their house? They don't answer the question, and a lot of them don't because they don't know, we just put unknown.
Okay, I understand that.
Yeah, so, any other questions, I'm, you know, uh, but. As, as far as the ARPA funding, the, the grant that you got right now, what D N R is doing is that they're, they're, you know, this grant's been available, and they're starting to take that money and give it to other communities. Though, and their systems that just don't, they don't care, you know, I mean, they're just like, okay, well, here it is, so.
Well, I know we, we, we've budgeted for 20,000 for the grant match, so we budgeted that, that's out of that ARPA fund, um, before what we just discussed with Flack, so. I wonder if the explosions and assumptions from the other bid.
What was it, did you say we had to do something else?
Um, I believe that I have paperwork on the, what I was trying to, is that, is that how you understand it as well? Does it all support you before you can collect the bid, because the paperwork that you're gonna do, and why would you choose?
Um, I don't mean to, it, it, you're not wrong, you're, you're right. Um, but there, you got the lowest bidder. Yeah, that's, yeah, I mean, there, I think, I've been to several of these meetings and I've heard of this score sheet, I've not got the, I've not got to see it, I've not seen it. There is, uh, and I'm quite, quite honestly, I don't understand it. I don't understand what the, it's almost a score sheet like, I'm sure you all have done engineering, uh, qualifications, score sheets. It's almost, it's about the same thing.
That's what I, I mean, to, 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 and basically give them a one to five number, why we pick this, a way, and then at the end you total those scores up and that's what you, you.
Yeah, I understand. It speaks the map, not.
Well, the, careful the, for the brass that was used before, you know, like, we had to breathe. Yeah, that's what I did, I just think it would be, um, that, that, I just think that's the only charge, I didn't think there would be, uh, for them to be, it's charged to the.
No, it's, it's not.
But the only thing I've ever found is on this, the floor, main, that's actually, yeah, they do.
And, 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 and the goosenecks, they're not even counting. That's, Jim, that, they don't.
And that, that's, there's pretty chance I've been in every yard in town.
That the lead goosenecks don't, you know, you know.
That is the only, the only way that I've ever found.
And, you know, Jim, since you said that, the way D N R is stating, uh, their confidence in the water operator is if he'll sign an affidavit on the ones that you can clarify. And you have to have it notarized, but basically they accept that as, as knowledge of the, yeah.
That would be, I say that, because I mean, with that being said, that's theoretically, could just follow as far as.
It's the customer side usually is what we're running in, on the, on the customer side's usually where we're at. So we just got done at, at, uh, done, sorry, we're at Deep Water Repair Play right now, and they, uh, you know, we're wrapping it up, is basically where we're at. And then I'm down at Portageville, I mean, you know, so, but the mapping goes really well. I mean, obviously, we're gonna take longer to do 900, it's a 450, but, you know, you're looking at probably five days, you know? And I don't have to do the back to back, I can do a couple here, and that way you can go along with your duties, so.
When you figure your potholing, um, since, since it was based on, that bid was based on the 440 semi services, do you do that on a percentage? Uh, do you normally say, well, you know, one fourth of them might need to be potholed? How do you figure that?
I'd, I'd, I don't know how many until I do the, yeah.
I, I just didn't know if there was like a, a calculated way you'd figure that.
So the S R F grant, our, the proposals are totally different than the ARPA grant proposals. And they are actually requiring now systems to put a total on, you know, this, a total down per pothole, but it's running into big issues. Because nobody knows how many you actually, and that's the problem right now, no one knows. And so when I bid on it, I put as much money as I think that's actually possible in that, in that part of the, and I think that's on your bid. Unfortunately, I didn't bring my bid, I didn't bring my bid packet with me, but I think I put a number in there for the hydro vacuum part of it, so. Yeah, I don't remember exactly what, how much I put in there, but.
So this is just an informational tidbit for us, correct, before we make our decision? I, I think we're gonna have to do that, that score sheet, that, but, but it needs to be voted, where's she at? She's pretty in office, I think. I, I, I know we have to get this, uh, voted on pretty quick, is my understanding.
That's what I said, we got till, I mean, October next year's a long ways off, but.
Has to be done by October, I mean, you still have to have like something lined up, I think, before then.
Yes.
How long the process is this normally, in its soundless size?
So if you, if you all make your decision tonight, two weeks from now, three weeks from now, whatever, um, to get it through D N R, and I do most of that. Uh, but their review process on the contract takes about three to four months. And then, okay, they'll say, okay, we can, we can start, they'll start, they'll basically award the money. They'll let me start tomorrow. But that doesn't, I can't invoice you. I can invoice you ever, all, all I want to, but I can't, you obviously can't expect payment because you don't, you haven't got any, I mean, you know. So that was the, that was a I O B experience for me. Like, I'm not gonna start working if you guys aren't gonna, you know, because this process, it's a process. So once that happens, that three or fourth month, however that is, um, it's gonna take us another four months. I mean, that's a, that's an estimate, you know, I mean, it just will. We got, so we gotta map the meters. Um, that's gonna take at least five to six days to do that, send the letters out, and we sent. That's gonna take at least five to six days to do that, send the letters out, and we send letters to everyone. And even if they're after nineteen eighty-nine, we don't care. I think it's an important process to this. And get those letters back, then we have to determine how many people didn't answer the letters. Then send somebody in door-to-door, do that, and at, at that time, by the time we do the door-to-door thing, we're gonna kinda get an idea on how many have to be potholed, so. Or hydrovacked at the meter, either one, we decide to. How we decide that we can do it? So, what we're running into with the meter hydrovac part of it is it's going great, because it doesn't make a mess in the yard or whatever. But some of our meters are too far this way on the pit, or they're too far back this way on the pit, and you can't see the line coming in or out.
Oh, okay.
So, if the customer says, okay, we got PVC in the, in the, in the house, and we hydrovac out here is PVC, then, you know, PVC from the ma, uh, the house to the, to the meter. Same thing with the copper or whatever, but, you know, if it's copper in the house, it's PVC out here, obviously, they connect it somewhere. We don't know where. We're gonna dig up the whole yard? No. That, that's an, that's an actual good, I mean, that's a fine response for DNR, so. Because if we come in here and start, but, we don't know what the customer did after they left the meter. And we can trace metallic pipe, but we cannot trace, I mean, plastic, I mean, it's just, you know, there's nothing, nothing we can do, use on that.
Yeah, when they were telling us about, like, how you have to have the pictures and the, and all the inventory, I thought, wow, this is gonna be a interesting.
And, and the thing is with the photos, and we do, we, in our letter, we, we, we went through this letter a hundred times, and we do give the customer the availability to take a picture and send it through a QR code. And out of nine hundred customers, we may get three hundred letters back. And of those six hundred remaining, we're gonna send them out, uh, door-to-door, anything that was built before nineteen eighty-nine. And they, it, when we do the door-to-door thing, we do get the photos. But as far as the EPA mandate, it does not require the photos. This is, this is a DNR, hey, we want photos, we want all this stuff. And I think it's great, especially for systems that didn't get grants. A lot of systems didn't get grants to do this, and we're working with those as well, so. So, anyway, I'm ready to go to work. I've been doing it a long ti, or not, I've not been doing it a long time. I've been doing, I started this company in May, so, but, you know, uh, I got awarded the first contract in May, and we got to start that in August. So, you know, I mean, um, and I worked very hard to get the contract going, and DNR works very hard. I mean, they just do, so.
What's your, what's your point, Bobby? What's our scale?
Actually, I didn't have much, like, this one, like, when I was scoring, um, I've given it to you, we have to have hash marks in there.
So, we would, we would have to decide on, on scale before we all.
It states at the bottom of this, three firms minimum per state law.
We only received, and this is such a new thing, but it's, it's hard, it's hard to find three on this one. This is all we received bid-wise, and I don't think you can hold out for another because it's, it's new. I mean, there's just, there's just not people out there that's doing that.
And, and I don't mean to overstep, but there's been a lot of these that's only got one bid. They're, they're not, they're not bidding on any of these. I mean, they, they have sent, I, I take that back. I have seen them bid, but they're not bidding on the, they're not bidding on the proposals.
They're trying to do the scan, but they're trying to, but they've been trying to sell these off.
Yeah.
So, if you want to accomplish, we're doing that, and that's what we do.
It, it matters in the aspect, what's neat about this inventory is, at the end of it, you get so much information about your water system, it's unbelievable. Because you may, you know, we may find a one-inch line that you thought was a three-quarter or a half-inch, or, or, you know, it may be plastic, but you literally, you know, when the map's done, of course, I don't do the mains, but, uh, you know, it's a, there's a lot of information in that spreadsheet, a lot more than I, I was like, well, you know.
That's, that's the only thing, so we get ready to work on a nine million dollar system upgrade. And all this will be, any of the old lines are gonna be in the water.
Yeah. They don't care.
It don't matter to them.
But the new lines we mapped as well, right?
Yeah, okay.
So, um, basically, what we're looking at right now is, we do need to make a decision, but we can't make it right now because we do not have the scoring sheet down. So, what we'll have is, we'll have Victor and Jim work together to get this scoring sheet completed for us. Um, and then we can go ahead and vote on that on the twenty-eighth. Does that seem reasonable to you, Lana? Okay. Do you guys have any more questions? I feel like you've been wonderful knowledge for us.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, yes.
The only thing I've got with this spreadsheet is, you can't, there's really, no answers, because this is what I still do.
That's what I was thinking, because you're talking specialized experience and technical competence with the firm, I mean, both of, both of this is.
And with the Kermit certification, some says, um, that evaluated the proposals and qualified to be a consistent scoring system. And since this is the one that you used in the past, may not be perfect, but what he's doing, but it's consistent, I think he's got it.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can answer it, it's just gonna be, are you gonna answer?
Not applicable?
Of course.
If you want, I can take, I can take a moment to look and see if there's any other scoring sheets that might be more applicable to this. Brad, have you not had any, you said you haven't seen any of these from your previous?
I've not been privy to them. I've seen them scored, but, I mean, the very first one I went to, they scored it, but I didn't have any experience at that time. I mean, I was, I, I mean, it was in May, I didn't have, I mean, I just, the by experience was because I had experience with my previous job and things like that, but I'd never done a lead service line inventory. But they, you know, I was up against an engineering firm that had been doing work all over, but they'd never done a lead service line inventory. And they said, I said, they said, well, the only reason you got the bid is because you're low, you're a low bidder. I said, well, I mean, I, I don't, you know, because that's really, I know that the, that's what DNR's like, they're, that's the only, you know, right now, the problem is, is this low bid thing. So, we got people, like, I got companies coming in, and they're bidding like forty thousand dollars. And, you know, so far, like, Burns and Jones, we bid, they just started bidding on these. And Burn, Jones, and there's another company doing it too, and we're right there neck and neck all the time, you know? Uh, only, unfortunately, you know, so, what happened to me is Burn and Jones and this other company got my bids. And it's totally legal, totally, so it's public information, whatever. So, I started getting their bids from Sunshine Law, and what I noticed about Burns and Jones, I was reading one, because they beat me by two thousand dollars in another system, and I got to the end of it, and it excluded some things.
That's what we just noticed.
And, and, and I'm like, this is, but I didn't get the bid, you know, they were lower than me, and the system awarded it to them, and I called, I said, I called DNR, and I called the system, and I said, they didn't, they didn't, they didn't bid on the RFP. They only bid on half of it. I said, how is this right? And they said, well, that's on the system, you know, and.
That's why I always notice.
I mean, I, you know, so, I'm like, how can you do that? But if you don't read the whole thing, and I do appreciate you all doing that, because that doesn't happen all the time, you know? It just doesn't, so, there's a lot of things going on out there that's like, okay, but.
You know, on the other, we're not gonna find anybody in the state of Missouri that has trade due. You know, when did it, two years ago, they started talking about it, and then?
There, yeah, there wasn't, no one, the only people doing this, when I started doing it, were some engineers, because there was grant money available. And that's the only reason that the engineer, and then now, there's other companies that found out about it, and of course, I don't blame them. I get it, you know? I mean, go get it, but bid on the RFP's all I'm saying.
But any company, what we do?
Yes. To answer your question, yes, that's true.
Not maybe not a new company, but Zoom to do lead line inventory.
So, I live down at Popper Bluff, and, uh, there's, uh, I got a coworker that lives, or my employee, actually, I just call it coworker. My employee works, she lives at Coal Camp, and then we've hot, we've got, we've got other people on staff that does some of the data entry for us, because it's, the, the data entry can be done at home, you know, so, that's a, the, the, it works out good for that, you know, so. And they've been doing it a while, so they kinda, they, they're getting better at it. And that's the thing with Diamond Maps, we can do, and since you all, you all can follow us on Diamond Maps, I could, you know, because that's what I do. I track the systems I'm working on, on, on the progress with what's going on with them too, so, you know.
When you say that, that means we can jump on there and look at whatever community you're working on?
Just yours.
Okay.
Yeah, no, yeah.
It's like, I'm not understanding that.
But, but I can, but I can show you, I mean, if you ever wanted to see some things, I could show you pretty simply on the.
Lance showed me some really cool stuff on that, that mapping system, and I think it'd be awesome to have our water mapped out like that. That was, the sewer looks great. I, I, I was very appreciative of what he showed me. We went, uh, and, and drove around, and he showed me exactly where the manholes were and everything. I mean, that's valuable.
Oh, it's, it's, it's absolutely valuable. The one thing the grant doesn't pay for is the, of map the valves or any of that. We can't, we can only map the meters, but that's a, so, when you all are done, you know, I'm telling you, that, to, to go in and map your valves and the water lines, because you already got the sewer lines mapped or the sewer manholes, it's not that costly, you know, it's just not, uh, because the, the, the meters take the longest, and so, to go in, I don't know how many valves you got to map, but there's probably not, it, there's not as many, and you're getting new water project.
Yes.
So, hopefully, when you get your new water project, they map them as they're putting them in.
Yes, they do, yeah.
Yeah, that, yeah, so, yeah, so then, all you would do, and then, it even works better, because then that contractor knows where those meter pits are. And he's not calling Jim every three minutes, saying, where's this meter, and where's this meter, and where's that meter? So, yeah, I mean, the mapping, and I was, I fought DNR tooth and nail on that, as far as you gotta leave that in there on the SRF side, and they did. To, to their credit, they are, they, they understand how valuable it is, because when I go to a meeting now, if the, if the, because the, the ones that didn't do a grant, they're trying to get it done as cheap as possible. I said, I won't do it unless it's mapped or I can map it, because a lot of systems have been mapped, so. And they're like, and, and I just won't.
I remember it now. It was, it's a hundred and fifty, ours is twenty, and then the other's a hundred and thirty that's left after it. That's what they, that's what your grant is. I remember now. It's taken me a little bit of processing.
Okay.
The prices, yes.
Okay.
So, that's what that grant money is.
What is it? I'm sorry.
It's, it's a hundred and fifty grant. The third, the twenty is our part, and the hundred and thirty is what they were gonna cover. That's what the grant is.
Okay.
I remember now.
Okay. With that said, what we can do is, we can't do it today, or, but we can do a change order. Because what's gonna happen, Lana, is DNR's gonna call and say, hey, we want the remaining twenty thousand dollars or whatever, and you just tell them, we're not gonna do that. You just kinda say, okay, and they may say, why? And I, and at that point, I'm doing a change order right now, because of the, something, because when, I didn't know this was happening, but they were calling and saying, oh, yeah, you gotta get that money back, or you, or you, you're not gonna use that money. And the system said, okay, no, well, that's fine too, but in this case, you know, we can do it, we can do a change order. And we get to a point, we can always, you know, when we find out exactly what we're working with, we can talk to the ARPA people and see if there's more ARPA funds available. Because there is ARPA funds available for lead service line inventory, because there's a bunch of systems not using it. So, they're sitting there pulling that, you know, and they're calling right now. I mean, they're calling systems all over that's sitting there on their butts, not doing anything with it, so.
And, like, I asked Jim earlier, to, I called him, um, that four hundred and thirty seven line, I'm digging around in my brain, it seems like those were the lines that, um, Robyn?
Pass, that's it.
Maybe there were newer lines in town that didn't have to be surveyed or something?
Uh, maybe, yeah.
There was a reason that you didn't.
Should we just have ONG here do, uh, Florida today?
Yeah, and, and, so, and that might be, but with the way, with the, um, the, the lead service line inventory, all nine hundred have to be done no matter what. So, if I get them here, and I will do that, I, I'm gonna do all nine hundred. You know, when that report gets submitted by the deadline or whatever, all nine hundred will be on there. Now, whether if we know all the material and all the nine hundred, you know, that is what it is, but you, at least you will have a working document. And that's the other thing, if that, and, and I left it out, but if we come down to it and we say, okay, well, we can't get our SRF grant, we can't get DNR grant, we still gotta have working inventory. And then, at that point, it may be where you guys wanna say, hold off, we're doing a water project. We got this inventory, we got it on Diamond Maps. When we do the water project, we can complete the rest of it. And I don't know, that's a, you know, there's all kind of things, because DNR, as long as you turn that inventory in by that deadline, and you show that you're working on that after it's turned in, there's nothing they can do, you know? You guys, you all will be fine, so.
Well, this is an absolute fine fact, because when water, I, we can actually, we don't have mapping, especially what kind of lines we're going to, and, 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 we, we.
We're identifying all the service lines, whether they're plastic, copper, lead, brass, I mean, not brass, but whatever they are. We're gonna identify that, and verify, I mean, verify, identify and verify.
So, well, first, if you go ahead and detect the lead, or, or you can actually map them all?
Yes. All of them are gonna get mapped.
If there's any, any other questions, Bill, um, if not, I would entertain a motion to, to postpone until this was scored.
I'm moving to postpone this till our next meeting, December twenty-eighth.
Okay, Bill has moved to go ahead and postpone the voting on, and, uh, I'm sorry, awarding the bids to, uh, the December twenty-eighth. Gabe has seconded that. All those in favor, four zero. Thank you again for coming.
You're welcome.
We appreciate listening to you, all of your information. You're very, very knowledgeable.
Yep, thank you. You all have a great Christmas.
You too. Thanks.
All right, that'd be good.
Okay, um, number three, discussion supplying sewer to new homes. Lance, you got anything for us on that?
Uh, no, we have no, um, Victor put it on our page a couple weeks, but I know he has some working on it. He should be pretty close to having it done.
Okay, I would.
He worked hard on it before we left, and he's getting it on himself.
I knew we had to kinda change the way our ordinances, because that, that copy and paste thing was just really.
Yeah, and he was really quiet with it, but he worked hard on it before us, and I think it's gonna be different for those to have it done, so.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to postpone that, uh, at least a, a month out on that.
Make a motion that we postpone this until January the eleventh?
Uh, Doreen's made the motion to postpone this until January eleventh. Do I have a second? Uh, Bob is the Bob. Bill has seconded that. All those in favor, four zero. I'm sorry, Jim, what's that?
Oh, no, I didn't want to start interrupting. I just wanted to say, um, this is a little bit bizarre. I didn't realize, until I, until he came in, who he, who he was, he worked several years with the MRWA and the Murray River Water Association.
Oh, okay.
So, he's.
Kind of knows the stuff.
And, and very type of the DNR.
Okay. Interesting information.
From working on proposals, and they're all exclusive of the other ones.
It's like a new ring.
Yeah, pretty, yeah.
Did you see it, Jim?
Uh, no, but I did, like I said, I did, even though who had bid it, you know, I seen it, it went here.
Okay, we're on to number four, um, discussion about ballpark fencing. I have two bids, um, you should have Stafford Fencing and you should have Miller Fencing. Um, I did try to call Stafford. He, he talked to me a little bit, um, after we made the bid. I did not, uh, realize there is a difference in the two bids. One of them bid with a gate coming in, so that equipment, it's an equipment gate. Um, I think he added that onto the Miller one. The other one does not have an equipment gate on it. That wasn't a requirement that I, we put out there. Um, it was just something I, he called me, had me come down there, he said, well, how are you gonna get equipment into Moe? And I'm like, well, that's a good question, sir. And so, he, he said, well, I'm gonna make sure I bid it with that on there, so.
And it's still comparable to the one that doesn't, I think, do.
Correct. I will tell you that Stafford Fencing did start the project in the first place. They had been working on it prior to, just so you know.
So, would this be covered by?
Yes, you could, you could use those ARPA funds on that. And I will tell you that East Newton, um, I guess they, they were under the impression this would have been done, uh, it was either a year or two ago. I did have a meeting out there with them. This is their practice field. The girls are.